Prime Asia TV देख रहे सारे ही दर्शकांदा स्वागत प्रोग्राम Prime election दे विच, Prime election दे विच, असी गलबात कर रहे हैं, डिबेट करवा रहे हैं Brampton में municipal चौना दे विच, जिस विच वाक-वाक औद्यावास एक चौन वो हो रही है भाई अक्टूबर इस वजह से मेहर दी चौन हो रही है, सिटी काउंसलर दी चौन हो रही है, रिज़नल काउंसलर दी चौन हो रही है थे उसपे अलावा स्कूल ट्रस्टी दी चौन हो रही है, एडवांस पोलिंग जड़ी शुरू हो चुकी है Prime Asia TV वालों डिबेट दा सिलसिला जा रही है, असी वार्ड दर वार्ड उम्मीदवार आनु सदा दे रहे हैं अपने स्टूडियो दे विच, ते उन्हें दे विचार तोड़ना ल, संचय करवा रहे हैं ताकि तुसी फैसला कर सको तुसी केस उम्मीदवार दे हक विच पुख्त ना, जहां नई पुख्ता किसनु वोट पानी है, जहां नई पानी ते आज असी सिटी काउंसलर दी जड़ी चौन है, वार्ड नंबर तीन अति चार दी हो रही है उसपे उम्मीदवार बुलाई नहीं थे, साड़े कोल पहुंचे नहीं निशि सिद्धू, जैफ बोमन, हरप्रीत सिंह, हंसरा तिन्नदा स्वागत जी, वेलकम ते जेड़े बाकी उम्मीदवार असी सारे नु सदा दा असी Prime Asia TV ने, ताकि सारे ए स्टूडियो विच इस मंचो पराण ते अपनी गलतांडे सामने रखना पारो नहीं आए, उन्हें विच आगे ने पैरन चौक्षी ने, उमर मंसूरी ने रियान रेनी ने ते तनवीर सिंह ने, इन्हां नु सदा दता गया पारो एथे नहीं पहुंचे ते असी गलबाती शुरुआत कर दिया, मेरे नाल, मेरे सहयोगी, संजीव, तवन जी मौजूद नहीं, तम सर गलबाती शुरुआत कर दे
अवनी थैंक यू, जैफ, हरप्रीत एंड निशि थैंक यू वेरी मच फॉर जॉइनिंग हेयर एट प्राइम इलेक्शन प्रोग्राम एंड बी अवेलेबल तू शेयर योर थॉट्स विथ आर लिस्टनर, आर व्यूअर्स वेरी इंपॉर्टेंट क्वेश्चन विच आई एम गोइंग तू आस्क फ्रॉम ऑल ऑफ यू अस्पेशली डी तू हु आर कंटेस्टिंग फर्स्ट टाइम इन दिस वार्ड, निशि एंड सिद्धू आई गिव निशि सिद्धू एंड हरप्रीत हंसरा, आई फर्स्ट गिव यू ओपोरर्चुनिटी तू इंट्रोड्यूस योरसेल्फ एस वेल एस एक्सप्लेन व्हाइ यू आर कंटेस्टिंग दिस इलेक्शन
This is Nishisiddhu I'm running as a candidate for city ward three and four as a city councillor I'm here last thirty-five years in this beautiful country Where I landed in Bramley, when I came here thirty-five years ago in Bramley Now it's Big Brampton where we all live Why I'm running? Because my, this is as you said, this is my first time and I am capable of doing that What city needs? To take care of the budget, to bring the safety And give the benefits to seniors and infrastructures I finished my MBA in major in project management I do condominium management Where it is, where it takes same thing, taking care of the budget Budget is most essential to everywhere, doesn't matter it's a city or in buildings I am creating the budget and I'm implementing rules, regulation And implementing the policies in, within the corporations
Thank you Nishu, हरप्रीत, what brings you into this election?
First of all, thank you to Prime Asia for setting up this great forum And thank you to our great candidates for coming here My name is Harpreet Singh Hansra, I'm thirty-seven years old I lived in Brampton for over thirty years Actually, lived my whole life in wards three and four for the last thirty years I started my education at Ridgeview Public School in Ward Three After that, you know, I went on to Fletcher's Creek, Cherry Tree High School at Turner Fenton and my post-secondary at Sheridan College at Steel's in McLaughlin I'm now raising my kids in this, in this community, in this ward Currently, I work at the Brampton Civic Hospital, I'm the team lead for patient experience Within the emergency department That gives me the opportunity to talk to people in Brampton on a daily basis You know, when they're at their most vulnerable Why I chose to run for city council in wards three and four? I've been involved in my community ever since I was, you know, like I was a young adult Since I was like thirteen or fourteen years old I care deeply about my community, I, I look around and I see Where our community is going and where the young people are going in our community And furthermore, when I look at the last four years of what's happened at city council And I saw, you know, the incumbent councillor and the incumbent councillors that were there They voted in groups, I don't feel they voted in favour of the taxpayer They voted in favour of groups and I think that cost a lot of money to taxpayers That's why I thought it was important, important for me to get involved and, and, and run for city council
Thank you, Harpreet, Avneet, if you can translate
जी, जिस तरह साड़े पहले दो उम्मीदवार ने दस्या के, क्यों इस चौन दे विच चुके देने को पहली बार ये चौन लड़ रहे ने, जिस तरह निशि सिद्धू ने आख्या के Funding दी जड़ी बहुत सारी जरूरत होंदी है, जिधो में किसी चीज नु करना दे, को कामन नहीं प्रचार ना होदा उसपे अलावा हरप्रीत सिंह, हंसरा ने दस्या के, जिम्मेदार सारा बचपन, जवानी जड़ी ऐसी जगह दे बीती तो जो-जो समस्यां वाह उन्हें दे सामने है, उन्हां नु लगिया ने, वो उन्हां नु हाल करना चाहूंदे या ते जिदे वास्ते वो अपनी जड़े जयता ने, वो जारी रखने गए
My question for Jeff is a little different The reason he's incumbent, he's taking care of the ward So, my question to Jeff is not to introduce yourself, why you are in election Rather, what are your achievements as the councillor for the ward three and four?
Sure, thank you very much and thank you for the, the other candidates who showed up today That's very good and welcome to the Punjabi audience, thank you for having me The last four years has been, I think, pretty good There's been a lot of media attention focused on this city, often for the wrong reasons And city council, as, as Mr. Hansra has said We were divided on several issues and that's to be expected City council is a place for natural debate and that's where debate should happen And nobody, nobody is going to agree on everything, we had a lot of unanimous votes This city council has done an awful lot We're going into the next election with a vision, 2040, which is going to take us The next, the next twenty years out, that had the involvement of over thirteen thousand of our residents We have an economic development master plan for the first time ever We have an arts and culture master plan that's, that's going forward We have a parks and recreation master plan that's going forward This term of council has set everything up So that the next few terms of council have plans, they have guidelines And we have things that we can follow to make this city a much, much better city
Thank you Jeff
जी, जैफ जेड़े हुने मौजूदा काउंसलर ने, इस वक्त उन्हां नु जो तो पूछा गया के उन्हां निया प्राप्तियां की रही हैं ते उन्हां ने क्या के, हाँ कुछ ना कुछ पावे आप उस च मतपेद हो सके, पर उदे बावजूद बहुत सारे फैसले जेड़े ने, वो सारे ने मिलके ले थे जितु तक twenty forty, वीसो चाली दा ज्यादा टारगेट है उसनु मिथ्या गया, जिस वास्ते एक आर्थिक योजना वो बनाई गई है उसपे अलावा जेड़ा सभ्य अचारक आधार प्रदान है, उस वास्ते भी योजना बनाई थे उन्हां ने कुलम लाके अपने जेड़े कार्जकाल नु उस संतुष्टि जनक दस्या थे इस कार के वो फिर तो चौन में दान दे विच ने, ताकि उन्हां नु वोट पाई जा सके ते जो योजना वाह मौजूदा काउंसल वालों बनाइयां गया ने, उसनु अग्गे ले जाया जा सके
Yes, thank you Avneet And now, we are going for an open discussion and we have incumbent who has a record of four years So, I think I'm going to give opportunity more to the people who are joining the fray And I'll give full opportunity to Jeff to defend his record Or to express his opinion about the issues So, I give first opportunity to Harpreet, Harpreet I give you an opportunity to ask one question to Jeff Where you feel he didn't do well
Got it, Jeff, in your opening you talked about The city of Brampton getting a lot of negative feedback in, in the media And I agree with you, we did get a lot of negative feedback whether it was mainstream media Whether it was TV or radio, or whether it was in the Punjabi community as well I also look at that negative feedback and I look at the votes that, that you And the group of councillors that you often voted with When I look at that, when I look at that negative, you know, that negative coverage Whether it was giving money to Brampton Beast, or whether it was giving money to You know, a private company for a bailout buying Riverstone Golf Course Or it was the lack of support given by those six councillors to the LRT route Where we gave that investment back to the province and we did not accept that route And we, we opted to put another four point five million dollars in for a survey of an alternative route The LRT was very important for Brampton, it was very important for young people, that's my question, that's my que- Yeah, that's my question
Because I want something left for her also
Oh definitely, okay, yeah, okay, so, so my question is You, you, you talk about a lot of negative feedback for the city of Brampton But most of that negative feedback came with you voting on the side of, that prompted that negative feedback
Do you want me to answer?
Yeah, of course
Thank you very much for the, for the question, no problem at all, there's a lot of individual questions that go on there I'll address the LRT first The LRT, there was never any dissension amongst the group of, of councillors LRT, everybody wanted LRT The dissension was the route that the LRT was to take The LRT route coming down Main Street into Brampton Provided very little, if any, economic opportunities for the city To intensify, to build recreational facilities, to build commercial industrial The view of Brampton for the past twenty years has always been to get LRT on Queen Street The main road that leads east and west in this city and that's where the majority of traffic goes We had an opportunity here to put the LRT on Queen Street And just imagine from the Dairy Queen, for example, all the way out to Highway fifty There is billions and billions of dollars worth of land there that can be developed That would provide hundreds and hundreds and hundreds more jobs More opportunity for investment in housing and more investment in the business areas We would have had billions of dollars more by choosing a route That has been on Brampton's calendar, I guess, for many, many years Bringing the LRT downtown through an area that's in a designated flood zone Without taking care of anything that goes on in that flood zone Would have cost this city millions and millions of dollars The LRT, they kept saying is free, 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 it was never free They came to us not too long ago and told us That our operations and maintenance of the LRT was going to be about six to eight million dollars You take eight million dollars and put that on the taxpayers' bill That's an additional two percent, every taxpayer in this city would have been paying to subsidize that LRT It was a wrong decision
Jeff, I'm going to hold you so that he can translate first And then, then we are going to give you opportunity to answer other questions also
हरप्रीत उन्हां ने जेड़ा सवाल पूछा, LRT दे मुद्दे दिखाओ, कोई LRT जेड़ा एक वड्डा इशू बनया हुआ है ए से इलेक्शन दे विच, हरप्रीत उन्हां दा दो वश है के, LRT दो जो फंड आए सी, वो वापस चले गए क्योंकि सिटी काउंसलर उसपर कम नहीं कर सकी, जड़ी उस वास्ते सर्वे की दे गए उसपर जेड़ा चार पंच मिलियन डॉलर जेड़ा खर्च होया, उसपर भी उन्हां ने सवाल चुके हैं पर जो तुझे पास से, जैफ ने उस दा जवाब देंदिया, ए आख्या के, जो रूट निर्धार कीता गया सी जो रूट बनाया गया सी, वो बिल्कुल सिटी दे हक विच नहीं सी, जो रूट होना चाहिदा सी जिम्मेदार ने क्या के, क्वीन तो होना चाहिदा सी, उस वास्ते पैसा बहुत ज्यादा खर्च होना सी जेड़ा उन्हां ने आख्या के, किया जानदा के, मुफ्त दे विच LRT मिल रही सी, पर मुफ्त विच नहीं सी जो रूट से काउंसल जड़ी है, वो दासरी सी, जे उसनसार LRT होंदी तो उस वास्ते बहुत सारे बिनस जेड़े थे, आ सके, जी शहर नु उस दा फायदा हो सकदा सी गलबात दा सिलसिला ऐसी तरह जा रही है, होन, वक्त हो गया, एक ब्रेक दा, मिल दिया, ब्रेक तो बाद ब्रेक तो बाद, आप सब दा प्राइम इलेक्शन दे विच स्वागत साड़ी गलबाजड़ी हो रही है, जड़ी डिबेट हो रही है, वो वार्ड तीन, चार तो सिटी काउंसलर दी चौन लड़े निशि सिद्धू, हरप्रीत सिंह, हंसरा, ते मौजूदा काउंसलर जैफ बोमन विच चाले ब्रेक ते जान तो पहला जेड़े सवालांदा सिलसिला शुरू होया सी जो मौजूदा काउंसलर ने, उन्हां नु हरप्रीत उन्हां ने सवाल पूछे सी, होन, उसे सिलसिले नु सी, अग्गे बताने
जी, जैफ, so you are answering the question, so the, हरप्रीत asked many questions In one question actually, I wanted only one question at that time
We can break it up, we can break it up
Okay, so you can respond to one more question and then I'm going to give chance to Nishu also to raise some questions And if you'll have more time, we'll take up all the questions
Sure, thank you very much I think the other question that Mr. Hansra raised Was the question of voting in blocks on city council City council takes hundreds of votes We vote on everything And if you check the majority of votes, you will find out that probably more than ninety percent of votes are unanimous votes There are some important issues where I did not vote with the mayor There are other issues where I was alone, standing up by myself on votes And there are votes where I did vote with, with the mayor and other councillors I do my research and when I do my research, I talk to the people in my wards And if the decision is good for my ward and the decision is good, I think, for the city of Brampton I will vote as I see fit If the city, if the decision that I make is that my decision will affect what goes on And I do not agree with the motion that's put forward, I will vote against it And again, that is what every city councillor should be doing We should not be putting up our hand because the mayor puts up her hand We should be voting because we firmly believe in what our constituents want and what our research has to show
हरप्रीत उन्हां जेड़ा सवाल पूछा सी के, जिस तरह ये भी एक चर्चा के सिटी काउंसल दे विच सब कुछ अच्छा नहीं रहा, मेहर दे नाल सारे जेड़े काउंसलर होना दे क्योंकि आपसी एक खिचोतां जड़ी वो बनी रही ते जेड़ा, जैफ ने, उस दा जवाब देंदिया, ए आख्या के, उन्हां ने बहुत सारे जे फैसले हैं जिस विच उन्हां ने हक दे विच वोट देती, पर जिथे उन्हां नु लग्या के वो नदे वार्ड वास्ते ठीक नहीं है, जहां वो फैसला ठीक नहीं तो उस वास्ते सिर्फ ऐस करके, के मैं सिर्फ मेहर दे हक विच हाथ खड़ा कर दवा के, मैं वोट करदा मैं वो जया नहीं कीता, मैं सिर्फ वो कीता जो ठीक लग्या, जिथे गलत लग्या थी, मैं वोट नहीं कीती
We have another candidate, Nishisiddhu, and I'm going to give her opportunity Because basically, it's very good that we have Jeff Bowman here, who is an incumbent councillor here So, you are joining the politics, you are in this fray So, there must be reasons why you are participating in this election as a candidate You're not satisfied with Jeff, so tell, raise questions which you think You want to ask from Jeff
My question is to Jeff I read there's twenty thousand basements are illegal I'm just wondering where the inspectors and the city inspectors were And why it was not registered and who's going to take care of it
Excellent question, Nishu, thank you very much That is actually one of the main planks in my platform I'm the only city councillor that seems to be talking about a huge issue we've got And that's with illegal second units, illegal unregistered second units There is no question, no question in my mind, and I believe in these two candidates' mind That we need affordable housing Years and years ago, the province dictated to the municipalities To allow basement apartments so that we can have affordable housing The problem that we have in our city is we've got approximately twenty thousand unregistered basement apartments Now, what unregistered means is, they do not meet, or they have not been inspected, I should say For fire code or building code There are a lot of people who are buying houses, turning them into rooming houses We've seen rooming houses where there's seventeen people living in the house And the house has not been inspected for safety and fire code violations We have had twenty-seven fires in the last two years And as Chair, as Vice Chair of Fire and Emergency Services, I get to see what goes on here Twenty-seven fires in basement apartments over the past two years Three of those basement apartments were registered We send the fire department out, we send three trucks, four trucks, sometimes more The taxpayer is picking up the, the cost of that expense These people who are living in the illegal and unregistered basement apartment need to be safe First and foremost, they need to feel safe in everything they do Secondly, we need to know where they are to be accounted for them So that when we go to the municipality, to the region, end of the province We've got the correct population for transfer payments here and that's critical And finally, where are our building inspectors? That's an easy question to answer The province told all the municipalities, allow illegal or unregistered basement apartments They did not give the municipalities the right to enter the basement apartment To ensure compliance with building codes and fire codes
I have extension
निशि उन्हां ने सवाल पूछा सी, नु के, बीस हजार दे करीब जड़ियां ने गैरकुनूनी बेसमेंट से गई, जिस विच लोग रह रहे हैं तो उन्हां ने पूछा सी के, इंस्पेक्टर कितने सी जेड़ा उसनु इंस्पेक्ट कर सके जेड़ा उसी जांच कर सके हुए ना, जड़ियां गैरकुनूनी बेसमेंट ने जड़ियां ने तो उसने जवाब दे विच, जो, जैफ ने जवाब देता के, उन्हां ने आख्या के, हाँ बिल्कुल ठीक है, गल सही है के, गैरकुनूनी बेसमेंट ने जड़ियां ने को वड्डा मुद्दा हो सकदा क्योंकि बहुत सारी सामान दे, जेड़ियां अग्गा लगिया जिथे गैरकुनूनी तौर से लोग रह रहे सी उन्हां ने एक उदारन इस विच, ए दी तीखे, एक जगह दे, सतारा दे करीब लोग रह रहे सन ते जात के, उदे वास्ते कोई भी परमिशन जड़ी है, वो सिटी कड़ो नहीं ले गई उन्हां ने जवाब देता के, इंस्पेक्टर कितने सी, इंस्पेक्टर क्यों नहीं सी ते उन्हां ने दस्या के, प्रवेश ने उन्हां नु वाख्या, ए अधिकार नहीं देता काउंसल नु के वो किसे भी बेसमेंट दे विच जाके, किसे भी गैरकुनूनी बेसमेंट विच जाके, उसनु उसी जांच कर सकन इस कार के उन्हां कोले अधिकार ही नहीं है, के कितने जा सक
जी
Yes, Nishu wants to ask another question and I give her opportunity
There's extension to that, okay, you cannot get into the basement And why people are getting notices now about when they have widened their driveways And driveways are outside Why they're getting, why those people who have sold and bought their houses It's not their fault when the driveway was widened They did not know it's legal or not legal It is widened and now why people are getting harassed by the city Saying, "Go bring it back to the double driveway, not a two-and-a-half driveways" Why they are getting the notices from inspector? Now inspectors are coming out
Thank you, this was actually a topic that we discussed in city council The very last city council meeting we had You know, it may not look on the surface like widened driveways are important to the city But the city's infrastructure, the amount of runoff that we get The amount of rainwater that, that can accumulate and runoff between driveways There's city standards on how much grass and permeable surfaces There must be between the homes and between the driveways In some areas of Brampton, when we look at the driveways The driveways are wide enough for six cars in some points So, what happens now to all that additional water? It's going into the sewage system, it's going into our wastewater management systems It's clogging up in, in a lot of parts, some of our watersheds And where we store the water so it can naturally disperse And we're spending hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars cleaning those out To, to make room for more The building inspectors only act on complaints So, anybody who's got a wide driveway and the building inspector goes out and looks at it And, and if, if an order to comply is issued Somebody had complained about that, some neighbour complained about that driveway and so
निशि उन्हां दा ये सवाल के, बहुत सारे जेड़े कार ने, बहुत सारे Brampton दे विच जिस विच ड्राइवे पावे, दो कारण वास्ते, या डबल ड्राइवे हो सकदा पर लोकाने उसनु बदा के, काफी छोड़ा कर लया, काफी बदा लया, गैरकुनूनी टांग दे नाल उस वास्ते सिटी काउंसल ने की कीता, जैफ ने उस दे जवाब दे विच, ए आख्या के जिनी देर तक कोई शिकायत नहीं करदा, उनी देर तक का सनु पता नहीं लगदा इस कार के, जिथे भी ड्राइवे किसने इस तरह बताया होया, जे उस दा कोई गुंडी या और कोई, उसी कंप्लेंट करदा, तान उसनु नोट्स पेजा जा सकदा उसपे अलावा उन्हां ने दस्या के, जे जेड़े लोकाने जया कीता, उस दा नुकसान की होया के जो साड़ा कुदरती पानी, जेड़ा बारिश दा पानी है, वो तुझे सीवे सिस्टम दे विच मिल जादा वो जेड़ा पानी ऐसी, जेड़ा कुदरती सोमे है, उस विच उनु विचार नहीं कर सकदे, उन सेव नहीं कर सकदे इस कार के, जिनी देर तक कोई शिकायत नहीं करदा, उनी देर तक को उन्हु नोट्स नहीं पेजा जा सकदा उन्हां ने अपील कीती के सारे इस बारे गल करन, क्योंकि ए मुद्दा एड़ा काउंसल दे विच विचारया जा चुका
My next question is to Nishu Nishu, if you are elected, what you will do right which Jeff has done wrong?
Bringing the community together, taking care of the budget Why we are raising the budget every year? My profession is such where I maintain all the budget for all the corporations and city tax
Nishu, my question is, what he did wrong? If you can specifically
What he did wrong?
Tell me two things, that this is what he did wrong and I will change it and I will make it right
First of all, bring the unity into the city hall as a corporate world It has lost all the councillors, including the mayor, they failed to do so And all the Bramptonians are suffering because of lack of unity
What was the role of Jeff in making the council dysfunctional or it was not working? What he did wrong in that?
I believe, I heard Because the city councillors, they voted for their, not the cause Cause was ignored just for the friends
Any one decision, mention us, where he made a wrong choice in voting?
Main thing is LRT
LRT, you differ with him?
Yes
Okay, perfect, I'll give, no, we have already discussed LRT and he has already pointed his Explained his viewpoint, now I give opportunity to Harpreet Harpreet, what you think you will do right which Jeff has done wrong?
So, I've lived in this ward for over thirty years, I know Jeff has as well and Nishu as well So, all of us care about Brampton a lot, so that's why we're all here First and foremost, that's important to understand What I feel where our incumbent councillor, Mr. Bowman, has failed When it comes to unity, I understand, you know, a lot of people have a lot of comments about that But when it comes to talking about that the LRT cost us money You know, we purchased Riverstone Golf Course for eleven point eight, you know, some odd million dollars We've added two million dollars to the tax roll to run that We talk about LRT costing us six million dollars to run on an annual basis But we just gave away two million dollars to an annual tax roll Just two kilometers away from where we just had twenty-three million dollars In recreational infrastructure, you know, in a, in a Gorman, within a brand-new facility That's two million dollars added to the tax roll We put two, four point five million dollars in surveys That's six, that, you know, that's, that's close to six point five million dollars There's room for efficiencies, there's room for efficiencies on council I do agree, a lot of votes at council were done unanimously, those votes were much smaller Their impact was much smaller, votes that had a larger impact You know, the only one that I see that happened unanimously was the university was the university, and I thank you for that, and I think that was important for our city. But now we have a university being built across from the gas station with no LRT going to it. You know, we can argue all day about routes, but the fact of the matter is that we lost that LRT, and we lost that due to the votes made by those six councillors, Jeff Bowman was one of them.
Yes, because at the end, the program ended, it's over. Harpreet and Nish, they asked, he asked, Jeff, is there any mistake? He said, he did something, he left something, he put it together, he said, LRT, not the city, he said, the council, and that way, all of them.
And Riverstone Golf Course.
Yes, besides, Golf Course, he also asked, he said, at the end.
First of all, Nish, what, why people should vote you?
People should vote for me because I'm capable, taking care of the budget, taking care of the infrastructure. When it comes to the community, community, bringing the community together is my strong point. As a professional, as a volunteer, I am all there for community. When it comes to the community, the crime will disappear. Why? Let's see, why we are hiring more police officer? Do we need for Bramptonians to bring the police, more police on the road and bring the safety? Why not teach our community, have a neighborhood watch and the welcome wagon? Or there's another little organization, they have just started saying that shoot with the camera, not with the guns. Why not we promote all those little, little communities to bring the safety?
Thank you, Nish. And last question for Harpreet, why people should vote for you?
Thank you to Prime Asia for setting this up. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Nish, for coming today. My name is Harpreet, and I'm running to be your city councillor in wards three and four. I watched over the last four years, I watched how council fought with each other, and I watched how that cost you, the taxpayer, money. I don't think that votes on council need to cost taxpayers money. I think votes on council need to improve your quality of life, improve your standard of living. When councillors vote with their friends, when they vote with each other, when they vote in collusion, that costs the taxpayers money. I think we need to put an end to that. I, when I had my launch, I had the mayor on stage, and I said on stage that I will hold the mayor accountable. I will not be voting with my friends, I will not be voting with the mayor or any other councillor when I see that it costs my constituents money. I vow to you and I pledge to you that I will vote with integrity, I will vote for the taxpayer, and I will not vote for private interest groups, I will not be voting in groups, I will vote for the taxpayer. This is why I think that I'm the best candidate to be your city councillor.
And lastly, Jeff, why people should reelect you?
Okay, am I allowed to respond to the comments?
Very briefly.
Okay. Very briefly, let's touch on Riverstone. Riverstone was a purchase of an existing building with property that connects to a path, a cycle path, a walking path, that now creates a path in the city of Brampton and Parkland, bigger than Central Park, New York. This building is going to cost about eleven and a half million dollars, maybe twelve, including the renovations that are necessary to create a facility that is there, that's ready to use, and that can be programmed for seniors programming. The two hundred, or the two million dollars that we're talking about and running it, that will be offset by fees from people who will join, who will go there, and who will use the facility. So, you know, that's one thing. So we've got a, we've got a facility for twelve million dollars that now seniors and everybody else is going to be able to use starting next spring.
Harpreet, quick, quick response, very quick.
Jeff, that all sounds really good, and sounds rosy because the window dressing is very good, but, you know, my kids go to South Fletcher's Recreation Centre at 500 Real Austin Boulevard. If you're not in line within five minutes to register, you can't register your kids because it fills up, right? And we have to understand that Riverstone Golf Course, yeah, maybe you feel that it was a good purchase, but I'm a parent that lives in wards three and four, and I don't see, I don't see you working hard enough, and I don't see our council in its whole working hard enough.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, but you, we have to let me finish, you gotta let me finish, yeah. Working hard enough to bring recreational facilities there, that twelve million dollars could have been better spent in wards three and four. I've been knocking doors in wards three and four for a long time now, and everywhere I go, everybody is talking about, we need more recreational infrastructure in wards three and four. You feel to do that.
Thank you, Harpreet. Because we are all in the same environment, we don't know, all of them, they have made mistakes, it's not possible, it's not possible. Thank you, Harpreet, thank you, Nish, thank you, Jeff. Final words.
I still want to give thirty seconds to Jeff to speak why, because that will be unfair if we don't give him opportunity to why people should reelect.
Absolutely. Why people should vote for me is because I am the councillor that has never missed a single council meeting or committee of council meeting. I'm the councillor with the second lowest expenses of all council. I have been quoted, what was written about me in the Toronto Star was that I do my homework. And when it, when it comes to looking for facilities in ward three and four, definitely we should look for facilities. But if you had ever stepped foot in the seniors facility at Flower Town, where we've got seven thousand members, and it was built for seven hundred members, you would know that we do need a seniors facility, and that's of critical importance.
Thank you.
Vote Jeff Bowman.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I actually have, I actually have spent, spent time at Flower City Recreation Centre. If that investment was not done in that part of Brampton, it was done this part of Brampton, where you clearly say the facility was built for seven hundred, but seven thousand are using it, that's a, you just talked about inadequacy in a facility where we have close to, you know, over five thousand people who are using it that it was not built for, that money still could have been better spent for the seniors facility.
The last word is for Nish now. The last word is for Nish.
I just thank Prime Asia, my request to all my people who had opened their hearts and the doors and told me about their problems, I'm always there for you, support me, I will do very good job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, Jeff, Harpreet, and Nish. Viewers, it's our effort that we can bring thoughts of our candidates so that you can make better choices. Prime Asia does not support any candidate, it does not oppose any candidate. We strongly recommend go for voting, you have listened to your candidates, and watch it, scrutinize them, and make a best choice for the Brampton.
Yes, it's on our side, that Brampton, the three and four city councillors, the incumbent councillor, choose, who is new, give him a chance, this policy is on our hands, because Prime Asia TV, who can't expect, doesn't grow, they are on our side, they are expecting, they have made mistakes, the incumbent councillor, they asked, they said, they said, they said, they don't expect, this policy is on our hands, but we have to appeal, vote, please, vote, you can't complain, if you don't vote, you can't complain, you can't win. If you don't vote, 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 you can't win.